The planning board for June 28, 2012 will now come to order. Anyone wishing to address the board will need to sign a green sheet up front and turn it in to Ms. Askew. Ms. Washington, may we have the roll call?
Mr. Hurd?
Here.
Mr. Remar?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Washington? Here. Mr. Horstman?
Here.
Mr. Benjamin is absent. Mr. Fishback is no longer here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mrs. Sage? Present. Mr. Chair, you have a floor.
Thank you. First, we have the approval of the minutes from May 24th. Are there any changes or corrections?
Already called in, minor changes.
I called in a minor change.
So...
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New items, Ms. Washington?
New item, number four, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, Daytona Commercial Division, DEV 2012-049.
Good evening. Tom Whitenour, City of Daytona Beach Planning Division. This is a request by Robert Merrill on behalf of International Speedway Corporation for approval of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment changing the future land use designation for 114 acres of land from general industrial to commercial amusement. The amendment also proposes to add a new neighborhood P issue and policy to limit residential development for the subject property to 1,500 residential units. We'll take these one at a time. Approval of the proposed amendment will allow consolidation of all of International Speedway Corporation, I'll abbreviate ISC's, land holdings into one consistent commercial amusement, future land use map designation, a Mosaic property immediately to the south, which will help facilitate more efficient master planning of uses more commonly associated with commercial amusement land use designation. The property is generally located north of International Speedway Boulevard and west of Bill France Boulevard. The property is comprised of three main parcels. The majority of the property is undeveloped, however, there's one light industrial park on the west side of Dunn Avenue and a separate light industrial building on the northeast corner of International, or Industrial Parkway and Avenue C. Palm Terrace Elementary School is surrounded by these parcels. The majority of parcels around are already designated general industrial. The Speedway Corporation's adjoining land holdings to the south already have commercial amusement, future land use designation. And the subject parcels are currently zoned M4. The applicant will have a proposal next month for you to look at that's a rezoning of the subject parcel you're looking at tonight to PMD to align with the PMD currently zoned for their Daytona Live property. This is what the future land use map designation would look like if this eventually is approved to be one large contiguous commercial amusement land use designation. The second part of this is important. When we looked at their impact analysis on facilities, we noted that general industrial didn't allow residential uses, but commercial amusement allows a pretty high density of residential uses. So, the applicant added a proposal to add a new issue and policy to neighborhood P to limit themselves to 1,500 dwelling units. The area is in neighborhood P. You're familiar with the maps in the comprehensive plan where issues and policies are listed. And the policy that they wrote would apply only to this parcel. It wouldn't extend down to the Daytona Live property. When proposed future land use amendments are analyzed, we are required to calculate potential demand on public facilities of most intensive land uses allowed. The future land use designation of the subject parcel, which is general industrial, does not allow residential development. The proposed commercial amusement allows residential with a maximum density of 40 units per acre. Applying the high residential 40 unit per acre to 114 would result in a high demand for public facilities. Since the applicant tells us he does not contemplate substantial development of residential, the applicant is willing to limit themselves to 1,500 units within the subject property by adding a proposed issue and policy. To avoid reading the whole issue and policy, I'll just hit the high point. The main issue just describes the location. The policy states the approximately 114 acres, which is the subject of the comp plan amendment, shall be restricted to no more than 1,500 dwelling units. The applicant team put together the impact analysis using the most intense development that would be allowed under commercial use, commercial amusement use. And we compared that to what's allowed now. There would be a reduction in water, sewer, and traffic. To summarize what we look at when it comes to different documents, the comprehensive plan, neighborhood policies, and Daytona Vision Plan, a consistent theme of how the proposal responds to these documents is it allows efficient master planning, economic development, retention of existing businesses, and creation, creating opportunities for And finally, the recommendation on the staff for the future land use map amendment and the new issue and policy is to recommend approval. I understand a majority voted the planning board members present in voting are required to recommend approval of this application to the city commission. The applicant is here if you have questions, and I could answer questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Whitenour or staff? May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Merrill?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole 150 Magnolia here for the Speedway. Thank you, Tom. Tom did a great job of summarizing this request. As he said, staff is recommending approval. He has several provisions in his report that I would hope that you looked at regarding consistency of this request with the comprehensive plan, and in particular with several elements in the Vision Plan that we've recently adopted, which I think is an important factor for you all to consider. As Tom said, we will be coming back to you all next month. I think it's the 26th of July with a PMD which will essentially encompass this property and the property to the south that he pointed out that was previously the Daytona Live PMD. So, great news, we're going to have a project for you that's even bigger than Daytona Live was, and I think it's exciting, and the staff is, I think, very close to being done with their technical review, and we'll be excited to bring it to you all next month. So with that, any questions that you have for me on the land use map amendment?
Board, any questions? Hearing none, we have no speakers. Board, your discussion on it?
No, I was just going to make a motion. You want to do it? Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Washington, item number five.
Small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, Ocean Dunes, DEV 2012-052.
Mr. Whitenour?
Thank you, Tom Whitenour, Planning Division. This is a request by the Development and Administrative Services Department, Planning Division, to approve a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment changing the future land use map designation from retail to level-one residential for 2.65 acres of land. The property is generally located on the east side of Ocean Dunes Terrace between Point Sienna Road and Ocean Dunes Road, and also includes certain parcels between Ocean Dunes Road and Roslin Avenue west of South Atlantic Avenue. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to rectify past oversight and the future land use map designation in the Ocean Dunes area. The majority of property, all of the property in here is residential. Eleven of, 10 of the lots are single-family, one's a sliver of land, and one's a duplex to kind of take you north to south on this subject area. These are the three houses on the first block. There's a picture to the left, and these are all including your package. Moving down and around a corner, these are all homes. And then the last stretch of this 12 parcel segment, that's where we hit a duplex in there. Other than that, it's single-family. This is what the future land use map looks like now. Everything's level-one residential until you get to these lots. From there over to Atlantic, it's retail. Current zoning is already R1A for everything except the last two lots. Let me make sure of that, which is R1B. Yeah, that's correct. Four of these lots are also considered contributing structures in South Peninsula National Register of Historic Places District. And the proposed land use change is to go from retail to residential, which would result in a map that looks like this. We did receive, and we understand you had hand-delivered a letter from the Historic Ocean Dunes Neighborhood Association. If none of you received it, let me know. We didn't include it in your file.
Did you all get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's four people that, whose names appear with that. If somebody wants to summarize that from the neighborhood, they can. As I understand that this was, they're in support of this application. Obviously, the city is initiating this, so the city recommends approval of this. And also going from retail to residential, just to kind of academically say it, does have a result of a decrease in demand on public facilities. So if you have any questions for me...
I need to clarify, it's level-one residential. It's not just residential, it's level-one.
Level-one residential is what's proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Does anyone, does anyone have any idea, has that always been retail, or did that change at some point?
It's been that way. We've searched back pretty far, and it was retail back in, at least in 90.
Okay.
Ninety-seven.
I, I was just curious. That was, that was my only question.
That was it?
Yep.
Okay. There are no speakers on this, so I think...
We need to cover this.
Oh, there is? Okay, I didn't see that. Oh, I'm sorry. We do need you to fill out a form.
I did. I filled out a form.
Oh, you do?
Yes. My name is Janet Haymer. I live at 520 Ocean Dunes Road, and I'm here on behalf of the Historic Ocean Dunes Neighborhood Association. I have some of my neighbors here with me. We would have had more, except a lot of folks are on vacation. We represent approximately 100 property owners in the Ocean Dunes area. And if I could just address that to Tracy first and kind of give a history, if you'd like, of why, when that was retail?
Yeah, I just...
It's kind of in, when, as I understand, and I wasn't here then, but apparently when A1A was widened, which I think was in the 60s, as a compromise to the merchants on the west side of A1A, because apparently there was parking right on A1A, parallel parking, they actually rezoned and allowed encroachment into the residential areas as a compromise if they ever needed parking. That was changed in 1997 when we realized that, when the neighborhood realized that that was in the zoning ordinance. And over the years, it's kind of been forgotten. This is why this happened, because that was changed, but then as everything, as the zoning code and land use ordinance was rewritten, it sort of got lost in the process. So this is basically to rectify that.
My question, the future land use map wasn't changed. I know the other things that changed.
The other was, yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Prior to that, and then it became part of the future land use map, but prior to that, when it was changed, when we petitioned to have it changed in 1997, it was part of the zoning ordinance, and I know that's all changed. I know you all received a packet from us, so I, you know, I won't belabor that, I won't take your time. We just appreciate you assisting with us. Ocean Dunes is probably the only beachside neighborhood that has always maintained its single-family owner-occupied area. It's never had to have any assistance from the city for any kind of redevelopment. We have families in our neighborhood that have second and third generation. We literally have families that have owned the same house for over 50 years. So we're a very stable neighborhood, and as you all know, when it comes to beachside neighborhoods, any kind of encroachment in a beachside neighborhood can be the tipping point to blight and deterioration. So we appreciate you assisting us in preserving our neighborhood, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Hearing none?
For the record, I didn't, I didn't receive this.
Oh, you did not?
No.
And I apologize, I thought everyone received one. But he hasn't.
His name's on that list. We brought one, everyone else...
Excuse us.
All right. Board, we're ready for your discussion. If you have anything on this, we have no other speakers.
Comment.
He's on six. This is five.
Is he having a problem?
John, were you going to speak on this or not?
No, I'm in favor.
That's what I thought, okay. Just checking. Yes.
I think this is an excellent move. Changing the future land use gives the residential, the R1A, directly adjacent to the retail zoning. It gives an extra protection to the neighborhood. And as you know, I applaud extra protection to residential neighborhoods. So I, of course, am in favor of this.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just going to say that I don't believe any part of this community has done...
We can't hear you.
They can't hear you. You don't like it.
I don't think any part of this community has done a better job of keeping its character through all the years, because this is a jewel. And I think anything we can do to protect it and leave it as the residential area it is, which is very, very nice, I think we ought to do.
Any other comments?
Well, I was just going to say, since I was on the commission and actually voted for this, the, I just think that this is something that got overlooked. We actually never did change the future land use map. The encroachment, the zoning change, allowing it back as a special use, that was changed, but this part just got overlooked. And considering the, the neighborhood, considering the historic area, considering the comp plan policies for that area in terms of preserving residential, it's happening a few years late, but yeah, I think it's the right thing to have happen here.
I agree with that, too. My only comment is, when are we going to get the local historic designation? And I think needs to be done post haste in that neighborhood.
That's another board.
I know, but it needs to be done. That's my comment.
Approve some all-scale comprehensive plan amendment development, 2012-052, Ocean Dunes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Ms. Washington, item number six.
Item number six, land development code text amendment, parking in the RDB5 zoning district, DEV 2012-002.
Mr. Berger?
Good evening. Reed Berger, redevelopment director, and wanted to let you know that this particular request is, is to try to change the vacancy rates in the RDB5 district. You know, we did the numbers on the vacancy. We're actually down to about less than 15% when you do all the math. We added a chart in there for you with some inventory. And so when people say that that whole area between ISP on Atlantic Avenue all the way north to Oak Ridge, which is the Main Street redevelopment area, is just a lot of vacant stores, I think they must be referring to maybe parts of Main Street and ISP where certainly we have a higher vacancy rate. But we are, we're really seeing quite a bit of occupancy in that, that stretch. So, the problem is, there are some stores that have been chronically vacant, and what we hope is that by relaxing some of the parking requirements here, we can, we can at least fill those existing buildings. Still requiring the parking requirements for the new stores with one exception, and that would be, we'd like to be able to, because of the difficulty of getting the, filling these buildings, let's say if somebody moves out and somebody else wants to move in and they have a more intensive use, require more parking, there may not be parking on site, but there is the ability of getting remote parking. We have a provision that says you can be 400 feet or get space and secure it, 400 feet or less away from the building, but you have to lease it for 10 years. Well, that's a long time. Those are, that's a difficult, and does not seem to be very feasible, given what we've, we've seen and what we've heard. So, the Main Street Redevelopment Board discussed this at two meetings, and I think we all concluded a number of, that's, that's being proposed here, of 1,500 feet from the building, which is a good distance. And, and the, the other part was that it would only be for three years, which matches up more with a typical business cycle lease and what you, you might, might find as being less burdensome for a tenant to come in and actually take that kind of a tenancy. So, that's, that's the, kind of the, the simple explanation of what these, these text amendments are about. And I would be glad to answer any questions you have. I will note that, that the, at the, the back of your information, there's the maps, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at that, and look at where the RDB5 is, which is, comprises most of the Atlantic Avenue corridor. And that the Main Street Board did vote nine to nothing to recommend, staff recommends approval of this item.
Are there any questions for Mr. Berger?
Just going to ask one.
Yes.
I noticed that you have it, you have it running through December 31st of 2016. What do you do, what do you do to somebody who comes in in 2014? Do you cut it off anyway in 2016?
What we're doing is, we're, if you come in at 2000, just before 2016, you could do, you can move in under those terms, and, and then the next day, you'd be grandfathered. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Okay, we have two speakers. Mr. Gilbert Mayara?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Gilbert Mayara, 43, South Atlantic. Mr. Berger, the properties he was talking about, some of those, some of those are mine, that we've been having a really hard time, the difficulties to rent them out, but to come to find out, I owned this property for 17 years. The city just changed the zoning for parking a couple of years ago. There's a lot of demand for people to come in to open businesses, but the requirement for parking is impossible to do around that area. For the past eight months, I've been going back and forth to different boards trying to find that, that solution. Now we did find the solution. I ask please if the board can look at grandfathered in the properties that were there before, and like Mr. Reed Berger said, any new properties that come in, they have a requirement. I had a strip center with 11 stores. I rented out five that don't require parking. The rest are being empty when I got them back from the Gillespie and Chuck Bray because they had contracts on them. But they've been vacant for, everybody knows them, they've been vacant for almost a year and some, a year and a half. I've been working on them, but the requirement, an example, somebody came to open a café. For a 50-seater, city wants 47 parking spots, 10-year lease. I own most of the property around that there. There's nobody who's going to give you a 10-year lease on a, on a, on a piece of property around the Speedway, just north of Speedway. This doesn't exist. So I, please, if I ask the board if they can look at, not only, not only making it easy for us, the business people, but to grandfathered in whatever property was there. When I bought this property, there was no parking. I gave a lot of the property to the city to expand the parking, to do more parking. But what the city is asking from me, or from those tenants, it is impossible to do. It is, it's just, or else the store's going to stay vacant. The city came in and put in some designs in the windows, they made it look really good, but it's still vacant. It's been vacant for a while, and if, I'm sure you all know the property, it's right on A1A, right north of Speedway Boulevard. There's a bunch of stores that I rented out, but I can't rent out the other ones without an easy, easing up on the, on the city ordinance. Thank you very much, and I recommend that you pass it.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. I've read this several times, and I'm at a loss for what it's exactly saying. You have other streets that you do not require parking, very busy streets like Seabreeze and Main Street. They're not required to have parking. They don't have a problem with finding parking in those areas. The A1A corridor, although you see in your packet, there's 614 parking spaces in those 10 blocks, what it doesn't say is there's an additional 2,000 paid parking by either the city or private parking. So with 2,000 parking spaces, there's more than enough to get people to these locations. Secondly, they lost five hotels behind them. You're all aware of that, because of the hurricanes of 2004. When they lost those, they lost a lot of the business. Anybody that lives in the area goes through the area. If you go Main Street to Seabreeze or to University, the foot traffic is tremendous. You go Main Street to International, it really gets sparse. If they're not going to the Ocean Deck, they're not going anywhere. So it's very, very shallow at that end of the parking. So I'm asking you, one, that those businesses that are there get grandfathered in and be treated like any business on Seabreeze or on Main Street. Just allow them, if they're there right now, they don't have to worry about parking. So anybody going in in the future just goes in, no matter what kind of business they want to put in there. It doesn't hurt Main Street, it doesn't hurt Seabreeze. I don't think it'll hurt this area. Secondly, because of the amount of vacant land and because of the E-zone, in the future, especially by 2016, there will be enough people to come in that who want to redevelop, they will take these property and they will go up. So I'm asking you just to treat it like any other place. There's more than enough parking. 2,000 spaces in additional to the ones they already have is more than enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, comments?
Motion to approve land development code text amendment, parking in the RDB5 zoning district, DEV 2011-002.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Item number 11, Mr. Jeffries.
Item number 11, rezoning to RDD3 from residential plan to unit development, Beach Street Condos, DEV 2011-099, quasi-judicial hearing.
Sorry, as I was beginning to say, this is the 300 block of North, North Beach Street. I think we've had a lot of discussion about that this is the front portion of what used to be the Beach Street condo project. Essentially, looking at the map here, in the back corner here was the, is the proposed assisted living facility, and then in the front portion, about seven acres, is what's being proposed as be zoned to RDD3. The redevelopment board recommended to the planning board approval of this, and staff concurs with the redevelopment board's recommendation.
One que, if, if this is rezoned and we still have that, aren't they all under one RPUD right now?
Well, my...
Today?
Currently, it's, it's still the 22 stories...
Is this, is this considered a major, a major amendment to the whole RPUD?
It's to be rezoned.
No, you're rezoning...
Going what?
No, but doesn't it include where the ALF, aren't the, aren't those...
This is a separate portion.
That's a separate portion. Legal description for that, Rob, just to ask, continue, because only the ALF, this is the remaining...
And that's not part of, but what does this do?
They were all part of it.
Yeah, what does this do to the whole, you can rezone part of the RPUD?
Yes. Right, the other portion will remain the RPUD with expired development rights. This portion can be rezoned to RDD3.
Okay. All right, that's what I was unclear on. Thank you.
The other one still needs to be rezoned.
To something.
Yes.
Were you through?
I was, there's any more questions?
Boy, that, that was short and sweet.
I think we've had a lot of discussion about this project.
Do we have any questions for staff?
And they, just to me, they want to rezone this... And they, just to me, they want to rezone this because there is no feasibility of doing what the current RP-
Correct. And staff is in concurrence, I mean, this is-
And it will not happen.
Right. And this is the, you know, but what this is gonna rezone it to is one of our redevelopment zoning districts. We're very comfortable with the design standards and the standards that we have for zoning districts that were-
For the RDD3.
RDD3 that are specifically designed for this area. And matter of fact, as part of the Downtown Redevelopment Board, you know, there's gonna be some work we're gonna be doing in terms of conceptual drawings on various important sites downtown. It's one of our, one of the priorities that the Downtown Redevelopment Board has.
Just one question, curiosity. Why are not you returning to the RDD4?
The RDD4 allows for more auto-related uses, motorcycle uses that you see currently along Beet Street. If you look at the redevelopment plan, it really identifies, and I want to say, put this in the, should be in the staff report, about some of the goals and policies that we have in our redevelopment plan. I would say the RDD3 is more consistent with the future, the goals and policies we have in the redevelopment area in terms of, you know, the development of that, of what is a very important site to downtown.
Were you wanting to say something?
Well, you know, I signed up, I might as well get a couple of words in.
Did you? I don't know, I've lost track.
Yeah, and I think there may be others that signed up too. I meant to mention to you that some of the, we had a great neighborhood meeting with, with an organized group of neighbors. And although it wasn't referenced in the report, it was in the back of the report, there were minutes from the meeting. And this, that meeting included both this rezoning and the previous one that was continued. And I just wanted to point out for the record, at the end of those minutes, it does specifically state that the crowd applauded me for bringing the project to the downtown. So, and that included the ALF. They thought it was great. And I, you know, I didn't even get into that with you guys, because we're not getting into, you know, we continued that. But I wanted you to know that the neighbors like, you know, what's being proposed, both in terms of the straight zoning, to try to get some mixture of uses there instead of tall buildings, commercial uses and some others, as well as the opportunity to have the ALF facility. So, you know, a lot of times when the people speak, you guys listen. And in this case, maybe not. But I just appreciate you supporting staff on this one. They are the ones that suggested this to us. We tried to work out some way that we could have a very generalized PD on this. It just didn't, couldn't make, couldn't make it come together. So, we're falling back to the standard zoning code. So, I encourage your support of it. And let me, let me just say one more thing before you vote, because we got a couple of months here to try to get some things together. In the meantime, and I don't know if the news journals here tonight, but they've been doing a pretty good job talking about, you know, Daytona Beach and what's going on with, with our economy and the E-zone and other things. Universities and the track and other ways that we can be better and grow better. A lot of the people that are quoted in the newspaper I was watching, and I wasn't one of them, are talking about the kind of negative energy, the kind of idea that we're saying no to a lot of things, we bicker about things. Think about that before the next meeting. Let's just, let's try to come to a place where we all agree on something. Because I think you will find that if, I'm not promising this gets built, the ALF. If it does get built, you'll like it and you'll go, God, that Merrill was actually right.
You can tell he's an attorney.
We'll talk about it then.
Actually, Bob's been here longer than you. 30 years on this board?
I don't.
Yeah?
Somewhere along in there.
He's, no, he's, I mean, yeah, he's done some amazing service.
Downtown Blue Road has been over this, I think, a couple of times, have they not? Any other comments?
Did you say you had some other, was he the only speaker?
No.
There was one on the ALF.
That's been declined, so that's, no, we have no other speakers, so. You did? Okay. What was your name? Here it is, right here. Yeah, it does have 11 below it. Would you like to speak on this? Please.
Okay.
I own some property on San Juan. It fronts on Ridgewood, and I probably have a couple hundred feet back from there.
I'm sorry, could you tell me, who are you again?
I'm sorry, Armistead Ellis.
And your address?
319 North Ridgewood, and then the 350-foot lots behind that on San Juan. So, I doubt that there's anybody, and I've wanted for, well, parts of it, for about 10 years. I don't think there's anybody that has more time on the street there than I do, and I actually walk up and down that street frequently. There are a few places I can eat within walking distance of my office. And I don't know if anybody wants to admit it, but that's a really, really terrible neighborhood. I don't want, I don't want my employees at my office after dark. Since I've been there, there have people been killed on San Juan. I am constantly chasing prostitutes and homeless people and crackheads out of my parking lot. I want these people to be my neighbors, and that's the way I look at them. And I think that the retail plans that they have for the end of San Juan, it's exactly what's needed there. And I would see the ALF as, if not that, what else? I mean, what else is gonna go down there? Who is gonna buy that property? Who's gonna develop it? Drive through it, take a look at the houses that are there, look at the people that are walking around on the street there. What they're gonna do is going to improve the character of that neighborhood. And if not them, who? If not that project, what else is gonna be there? Because there's nothing there that's any good right now. So I would urge you to allow this project, both parts.
Thank you.
Make motion to approve zoning map amendment, 2011-099, Beet Street condo rezoning.
Zoning map, oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes. Item number 13.
Item number seven, Land Development Code text amendment, restaurants with drive-up windows, DEV 2012-046.
If I could just take a moment, just to, there are four items now coming up. They're coming out of the Downtown Board, beyond the dogs and the dining, and the outdoor dining areas. These next four all relate to each other, and it's all based upon one request, which starts with the Renaissance Place PD, which is a request for assisted living facility in the downtown on a portion of what was the former Beet Street condo project. This would be the back portion, and when I get to the item, we'll get more detail about that.
Can I ask one question before you go further then, since they're related?
Yes.
But they don't have to be voted together. We're taking each one independently.
You're gonna take each item individually. I just want to give the board some background on, because I think we're gonna take these in order of the agenda, but I just want you to know how they all fit together. So again, the Renaissance Place, there's a request for the assisted living facility in downtown, which is just on a portion of the former, the RPOD for Beet Street condo. The remaining portion of the site, which is the front along Beet Street, is being requested to be rezoned to RDD3, which is one of the downtown zoning districts. And they don't really, there's not a pending development site or development project on that site. So that's the reason for just going to what is the RDD3 zoning district. And related to those two rezoning items, there are two text changes. The first one, which we'll discuss first, is item seven, is the LDC text amendment for restaurants with drive-up windows. This relates to the RDD3 zoning district. With the nature of that zoning district allowing drive-up windows, there's some amendments we want to make that correspond to that item. And then the final text amendment is the assisted living facilities text change, which is, the assisted living facilities fall under our definition for community residential homes in our Land Development Code. And because they're requesting a PD, and community residential homes are prohibited in redevelopment areas, we'd have to basically make some amendments to the text to allow that use in a redevelopment area. You can't just allow a prohibited use through the planned development process. So I hope that gives you some, what the link of all these different items are. So with that, I'll start with the drive-up windows request. Essentially, the, with the rezoning of the front portion of the Beet Street condo project to RDD3, RDD3 is, for the most part, is on Ridgewood in the downtown area. It allows certain auto-related uses, such as, I think, boat, boat sales, auto parts services, and drive-up windows. It's, you know, Ridgewood is a more commercial oriented than the mixed-use zoning districts that are RDD1 and RDD2. Two of those conditional uses in the RDD3 are designed that they only can occur on Ridgewood Avenue. When it comes to drive-up windows, there is no such restriction on those. So, with the rezoning of the front portion of the Beet Street project to RDD3, which staff is supportive of, we do believe that there should be a corresponding text change to ensure that the fast, drive-up windows, which are essentially used with fast food restaurants, remain only allowed on Ridgewood and downtown. So that is the reason for the text change, and you see the amendment adding that additional condition within 32, that in the downtown area, the use shall be located on Ridgewood Avenue. In addition, while going through the amendment process, we identified some glitches in our current code. Shouldn't be any surprise. The restaurant definition, you'll see that in many of our redevelopment districts, they allow restaurants A1, A2. Well, the definition of restaurant A2 essentially is, essentially refers to fast food restaurants. So what you have in the code is a conflict where it allows this type of restaurants a permitted use, but then saying the drive-up window is also a conditional use. So, what you see in your, in the staff report, in the charts for the downtown, for the downtown and the Main Street zoning districts, is a clarification that it excludes drive-up windows in those certain districts where we do not, and really has been our interpretation, that we do not want fast food restaurants in those locations in our redevelopment areas. Or not just, not that they have some, but drive-up, fast food restaurants or restaurants with drive-up windows. So the Downtown Board approved this, recommended approval of this amendment, and staff is supportive of the redevelopment board's recommendation. If there's any questions?
But you would not be permitting a walk-up window in those areas?
No, they could have a walk-up window, because that's different.
Would that be an A1 restaurant? According to this, it says no service permitted at walk-up windows, drive-up windows, or in parked cars? It's on page two, item one.
I think this is just taking out the drive-up windows.
Right.
Right, the walk-up would stay?
Yeah.
Because it's walk-up windows, comma, drive-up windows, or in parked cars.
Right.
So it would just take out the drive-up windows.
Right.
Yeah, because A2 allows walk-up service.
Right.
Out of curiosity, parked cars, so someone could put a Sonic down there and be served in their cars?
Well, I would, that would, a Sonic would fall under A3, because that's car hop service.
Short order, oh, car hop service to persons.
In parked cars.
Well, who's serving the park, people in the parked cars in A1? I mean, that's a good point Mr. Moore brings up. We have-
No, no, it says no.
Like an Outback, how they'll bring it to your, to your car door?
They're not serving them, they're just bringing them whatever they ordered or something, or like BJ's that-
No, I'm sorry, the definition of A1 is conventional restaurants having 100 seats or more, tables or booths, counter service, all service shall be indoor, and it says no service is permitted at walk-up. So, A1 restaurants can't have walk-up, drive-up-
Or parked cars, or drive, okay, I get it.
Then A2 says it may, may provide, on or off, provide service at walk-up windows or drive-up windows. Both of those are allowed. All we're doing in the charts is excluding the drive-up windows.
Because we have A2 in there as well.
Right.
Okay, now I get it.
And then I think Clarion is totally gonna, the proposed code changes all this, so.
All right, now I get it.
Any other questions?
Yes. Sorry, just one question now. I think under the RDD1-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Hoitsman.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Under the RDD1, which is on page four, they indicated that the business service is above the ground floor. Does that mean they can't have any on the ground floor?
Business service-
Because this is the same thing for professional, for professional services.
Right. That's Beet Street.
They cannot be, right. They cannot be.
And it's always been that way.
Right, okay.
Or since, I think, 89 when they adopted this code.
Okay.
And we, you know, with all the work we're doing downtown with Bob Gibbs and what the Downtown Development Authority is doing with Gold Associates in terms of marketing downtown, there's a primary focus on retail and dining in that court. The RDD1 zoning district is essentially from Beet Street up to the, or from, on Beet Street, from Orange Avenue up to the post office. And so, and that's, you know, this zoning has been in place since 1989, primarily focusing on retail and restaurants on the ground floor. And then lately, we've been, you know, there's been extensive contracts by the CRA and the Downtown Development Authority in terms of promoting and building upon the retail and restaurants we have downtown.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one quick, the, this actually really, this maybe came up because of the Beet Street condos, but this actually really isn't tied to them at all, because anything, I mean, the, you're just saying that anyone who would be RDD3 downtown, that this doesn't belong on Beet Street.
Doesn't belong on Beet Street, right.
Ridgewood.
Right. We want it on Ridg, I think our desire, and if you look at our, if you look at the plans for, you know, you look at the Downtown Redevelopment Plan, even go back to the Nottingham Plan, which wasn't really adopted, but provides a lot of the background for it, is our currently adopted Downtown Redevelopment Plan. It talks about the service, those type of, I'd say more auto-dependent type uses, being on Ridgewood versus-
Pedestrian versus auto, and we want the pedestrian, and that's just why the commercial's gotta be on the ground floor. And the auto, which is US1.
All right. We have a late speaker, Mr. Merle.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't expect to speak on this one until I saw the conversation developing. Rob Merrill, 150 Magnolia Avenue with Cobb Cole. I am here representing the property owners that Tracy referred to and that Jason said, I think, had some relationship to this. And I guess it does in the sense that item number 11 on the agenda is a rezoning that would otherwise allow this use that he's fine tuning. We don't have an objection to it necessarily, but the question that you raised, Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure it was clearly answered. We had some dialogue at the Redevelopment Board about that. And specifically, we don't want to have a McDonald's or Burger King or Wendy's developed on that site, but maybe an Outback or, you know, something that has a drive, opportunity for somebody to drive up and get a takeout out of a window. And I don't know that the terminology "drive up" versus, instead of "drive through", which I think most of us think about a "drive-through", where you drive actually through the portico or something to pick up your food. Maybe, maybe since you're doing legislative action here, let's clarify that. I don't have a suggestion for you, other than just the term "drive-through" versus "drive-up" might be clearer. I asked the Redevelopment Board just to make sure their record was clear, so if we have to come back and argue about it later, at least we have some legislative history. But I'd prefer to see something that's clear in the code about it, so that when somebody reads it, they don't have to go back and look at what you guys talked about. It's clear by looking at it. So, again, I may be unnecessarily confused, I don't know. But I, when I look at "drive up", it makes me think that the Outback situation, where you drive up and you get a Styrofoam box in a bag out the window is maybe prohibited. I would want to make sure we didn't-
Wouldn't that be a "drive-through" then, you know, is what you're saying?
Well, like I said, through versus up, yeah. When you're, when you're going through a takeout, you know, a fast food situation, you're driving through, you're not getting out.
You do reference in there a walk-up window though, where you park your car and walk up and get an order. Or many places, Stonewall, you go inside and get your order.
And that's all I'm trying to make sure we protect against.
Your nicer restaurants, it's typically what you do. You don't have a "drive-through" window.
Right, nobody bring, and I'm not aware of people bringing food out to your car, but maybe that happens, I don't- Right, nobody bring, and I'm not aware of people bringing food out to your car, but maybe that happens, I don't know. I don't do that, but if that was the case, I wouldn't want to prevent that either. You know, there's a busy lobby with people waiting, so they actually bring the takeout orders to somebody who's waiting on the parking lot. I don't think that's a problem, if we're talking about a sit-down restaurant, that that's their primary business, not fast food. So anyway, just, I think, want to make sure it's clear.
I thought, after the discussion we had, I thought walk-up clarified it in opposition to drive-up or drive-through. I thought that clarified it.
Yeah, and I think maybe that is, it may be the fact that it's, that it's walk-up versus drive-up, because you can't actually drive to the point where you're going to have it delivered, other than the exception that was, that was brought up tonight, which is, what if it's an Outback? I use that as an example, I don't say it's any better than any of the ones. But if that, if there's an opportunity where you call in, which people do all the time, and they say, "I'm out in the parking lot, would you bring the thing out to me?" Because you've got a line out the door, we don't want to prevent that either. So, you know, I just, I'm not offering you any specific legislative suggestions, I'm just cautioning you and making sure that you have your code and your record clear on it. Thanks.
There are some restaurants that do have customer parking right in front of a door, and if they don't, if your order isn't quite ready, they'll ask you to wait outside and they'll bring it out to you when it's ready, so that does occur.
Does our city attorney, I mean, does it really make a difference, drive-up versus drive-through?
No, we talked about drive-up versus drive-through after that downtown meeting, and we decided it wasn't necessary to change it to drive-through, especially once you have in the definition of A2 walk-up window. So we're comfortable with drive-up window.
That it won't exclude what is being, it will, okay. Is there any public?
Any other comments?
Did we have public already?
Ready for a motion?
What are we on? Motion to approve Land Development Code text amendment, Restaurants with Drive-Up Windows, DEV 2012-046.
We have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. I pulled a boo-boo back on item number four. We were supposed to have two votes on that, one on the industrial, commercial.
Item number, which one?
Item number four.
I think so long as the motion was clear for the amendment, all of that is the amendment. So if the motion was for all of the amendment, I think you've covered it. Just needs to be clear that.
Well, in our packet, it said there would be.
There's two parts.
Two parts to be voted on separately, so I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, the Speedway.
There's a, there's a map and a policy.
Neighborhood policy.
We don't want to have what happened.
It's all the requests, yes.
So if I made a motion to include the amendment in the large-scale progress plan amendment, Development 2012-049 Daytona Commercial Amendment.
That would make it clear.
That would make it clear.
Okay, was that your motion?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Thank you for clearing that up. We're ready for item number nine.
Okay, the next text change is related to the Renaissance Place request for assisted living facility in the downtown area. As is stated before, this came about because the assisted living facilities are currently, in our current code, as our code reads in the definitions, assisted living facilities fall within community residential homes definition. And this is, this is because the, our definition in our land development code referred to Florida statutes 419 and 400. 419 deals with community residential homes as the state regulates them. 400 dealt with adult care facilities, I believe they called them. They eventually, the state at some point amended Florida statutes 400, and it became Florida statutes 429. And because our code refers to, as these sections are amended, legal, the city attorney's office made the determination that assisted living facilities fall within, the Florida statutes, fall within community residential homes. 429 currently deals with three parts, there's three parts to this section. One is adult daycare, assisted living facilities, which are generally 15 or more people, and then adult family care homes, which under their definition is under five people. So as we go through the, this revision, what we're doing is we're pulling, our, our basic attempt here is to pull out assisted living facilities from that definition of community residential homes. Just for your information, adult daycare, through discussions with the attorney's office, would fall under our current, our definition for daycare facilities. You look at the definition of daycare facilities, they are, it refers to adult and children in our definition of daycare facilities. And then adult family care homes, especially after how this is drafted, the amended that's before you, would fall, continue to fall under the community residential homes definition. Just, you know, when you look at retirement facilities, this assisted living facility is essentially a type of retirement facility, and there's varying levels of assistance they give when it comes to retirement. You have independent living, which I think we have facilities that do that in, in the Daytona area. I think one I've always referred to, I believe, is Bishop's Glen, it's up in Holly Hill, would be a type of independent living care facility. Here, the, those are elderly, they're still mobile, they might still have their vehicle, but they, they require maybe limited assistance. Assisted living facility do provide limited assistance in terms of care, but no nursing care. And of course, the most intensive type of retirement facility would be nursing homes. So essentially, to address this issue of allowing assisted living facilities in the downtown area, what we have done is to create a new definition for assisting, assisted living facilities and to revise the community residential home facility. And again, our assisted living facility definition would now only refer to Florida statutes 429 as they're defined in that section of the state code. And then any reference to that in the community residential home would be deleted. The assisted living facilities, as you have before you, would not be prohibited in redevelopment areas, and it would be allowed in certain districts as a conditional use. And in identifying the districts they would go in, we, the recommendation was to put it in districts, the same zoning districts where nursing homes are, because these should be no more intense or any different than institutional, than a nursing home-type facility. But that's, you know, again, depending on your discussion, I think there's, you know, we can amend those suggestions. But that's just kind of, in our staff draft, that's where we've suggested to put it. This was taken to the June 5th, as you recall, the, the two items that follow were continued from your last meeting, because this issue came up just as we were preparing everything for the planning, your last planning board meeting. We did take this issue back to the June 5th Downtown Blue Road meeting, and they did recommend seven to one in favor of this text amendment, and staff does support this decision.
Do we have any questions from staff?
I have.
Yes.
Oh, can I point out, I'm sorry, one thing is, you should have handed out to you some additional revisions based on some additional work with the attorney's office, and those changes from what was given to you in your packet are in red.
Right.
Is this some additional clarification?
Yeah, we have those. Yes, Tracy.
One thing I keep getting confused over, currently, assisted living facilities of any type would fall under community residential homes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But they're not allowed in a redevelopment area, are they?
No, I got that. So if I look at page two and the top of page three, the new, the new, what do you call it? Use schedule that's being proposed, we're now saying that in single, we're actually taking them out of single-family, all the R1s, and we're taking them out of multifamily, R2.
Assisted living facilities?
Yeah, because you're not putting them in until R2A.
Correct. Because of the definition of assisted living facilities, where it's 15 or more individuals, the density requirements would be such that you couldn't, you wouldn't, I don't think you'd want those type of facilities in a single-family residential district, nor do I think it would even be feasible, because of the density requirements, to build such a.
But currently, wouldn't they have been allowed?
No.
Only if they're less, I think it's seven or less, the federal government supersedes our zoning on some of that stuff.
Right, but what about the, between the seven, because isn't single-family up to eight units per acre or something like that? So between the seven and the 15 we're talking about, they now cannot, we've actually taken them out of some of our zoning.
Well, you're, you're mixing density and use and.
Well, wouldn't the, wouldn't the community residential homes?
There are some, the way, the way we define assisted living facility proposed is 15 or more.
Right.
So if there were an assisted living facility with, say, 14, it would fall under the definition, definition of community residential home. So if they're under 15, if they're 14, they could still go where the community residential home is.
Okay, as long as they met the other, any of the conditions that were in there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's where I was getting confused.
So to do this, what we're doing is amending the land development code and changing Article 2, Section 3, Article 9, Section 2, Article 10, Section 2, Article 11, Section 2, and Article 17, Section 2. That's a lot of changes to the land development code for an assisted, to be able to move an assisted living facility into a certain area. That's, that's what you're really doing. And then we don't have a builder for that, that gets into another, another item that we'll discuss.
Right.
Next, but I have concerns with this, of our, starting to change land, land uses and really not having something concrete. Kind of reminds me of the condos over in the Oceanside, where, what, we had 18 condos, and we all thought it was going to be great, but did we ever get taken? The land uses were changed, but what did they start to do? They started flipping. And if you don't have anyone here, how do we know this can't happen too? I am kind of skeptical at this point, I'll put it that way. That's my feeling on it.
And could I just ask one other question? Your comment in here, staff supports, the comment you made, staff supports the board's recommendation. Just out of curiosity, what was the redevelopment staff report to the board? Did they make a recommendation, or did you? And here you say you support the board's recommendation.
Downtown.
Downtown board.
I mean, what did our?
But what did you tell that board? That you supported the idea?
Yeah.
Or you left it, okay, so now it's just.
I'm trying to remember, I'm pretty sure.
I just wondered how that staff report.
I mean, from a staff perspective, I don't think there's any concerns about, I think, further clarifying assisted living facilities. Now, there could be issues of where, what zoning districts you're putting them in, but I think the idea of pulling this out, that, I think our community residential home definition is too broad.
Okay, so that's really what you were asking at there.
And plus, I don't know, I don't know if we necessarily intended, what we can't really determine is when you go back through the legislative record, did we really intend to prohibit assisted living facilities? Because when we make those reference to Florida statute, that Florida statute's been changed and amended through the years.
But doesn't our definition say that as amended?
Right, the old term was adult congregate living facility. They dropped, the Florida statutes dropped that term, now they say ALF. So it's just a switch in terminology and a move to a different section.
Right, but did not our definition in the land development code cover the possibility of Florida legislature amending this, just change? Thank you.
It could, but I'm just saying, I don't know if it was our, when you go back, you look at the Blight study, I don't know if it was ever intended that this type of retirement facility was really a blighting influence on downtown. Is it the best thing for downtown? I think the downtown board, I think you have the record from the downtown board. You know, they had, obviously they have concerns about the project, and I think that some more comfort level was given because of its location in downtown, and definitely they didn't want it on the prime riverfront site. But is it really a blighting influence to our redevelopment area, especially our downtown? I don't know if that's really, if you look at our Blight study for downtown, if that's ever identified.
Anyone else?
Do we have any assisted living facilities operating now?
In downtown?
Anywhere, within city limits.
We have 21 out of 50 registered ALFs within a nine, the nine-mile radius of 32114 area code, which goes to South Daytona and Holly Hill. There are 50 registered ALFs, 21 of them are in the city of Daytona Beach. Three of the registered ALFs are within the downtown redevelopment area.
I'm sorry, three?
Three. Registered ALFs. I'm not taught, you can't get it confused with senior housing, affordable, I'm talking registered ALFs. Three of them are in the downtown area. That's available on the HUD and the Florida State, I just happened to look it up last night.
I thought they weren't allowed in redevelopment areas, is that all right?
We're glad you did the homework, Tracy.
All this information is like so right there.
I think I have to agree with Mr. Moore that I really don't want to put the cart before the horse. I'd like them to, you know, I'd like to see some more concrete interest in someone doing this before I changed a bunch of zoning on our.
It's almost like we should have had the Renaissance first and then this, perhaps, so we could have addressed that. If you would, Mr. Merle, I have two speakers, and I'd like to have you last, because you will probably take some more time.
I'll try not to, but that's fine.
And Mr. Nicholson. Do you want a 10? Okay, Mr. Merle.
John might have helped me, I don't know. This is a staff request, not mine, but I do want to speak on it, because as you're hearing, it relates to the next two requests. I'm going to try to be, try to clarify some of this, because Larry, your point about, why are we making all these different changes in all these places in the code about one project? That's just not what we're doing here. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the project, because it'll help you understand how this came up in the context of that project, but it deals with something much broader. The project, which includes not just the ALF site, but all of the whole car dealerships. My client purchased all that property, trying to get it positioned so something can happen there, we hope. Whether there's a builder today, or tomorrow, or the next day, I don't think that's necessarily relevant, but, but we'll get into that when that subject comes up. During the long process, which we've been over a year in the process of trying to figure out how to get this zoned, because it used to be zoned for a giant condominium, everybody knows, which there's no market for. So the subsequent owner wanted to try to get it back into what's more of a redevelopment-type of zoning, which is what we're doing with item number 11, on most of the site, the frontage, that is, on Beach Street. Well, during that process, we went a long way talking about all the different details of what trees have to be planted and where all the driveways should be, and what the building should like, all that sort of stuff with the ALF. And then we went through a lot of different iterations on how we could come up with a plan for the Beach Street part, but every time we tried to do that, we, we didn't know exactly what we wanted to, so we kind of fell back to what I think Rich, over a year ago, recommended, which is, why don't you just go to the straight redevelopment zoning? So that's, that's what we're doing with item number 11. But on item number nine, on item number 10, this business of being prohibited never came up to the 11th hour. And when it came up, I said, "Well, we never considered that, because we don't think we are that animal that's identified, either as it's defined under the statute, or it's defined under the code, or as you guys designed to prohibit it back when you did that." As Jason was saying, we don't really know whether that was the blight that we were trying to eliminate. I don't understand how it could have been, but so all those factors created this confusion. All this item, number nine, is trying to do is clarify your code, define things, and it's defining things as they're defined in the state statute. So I don't, I don't understand how there could ever be a debate about taking something that's unclear. And the reason why it's unclear, as I think Tracy alluded to with her research, and Carrie, I think, talked about a little bit in terms of the definition, was there was a definition of something, and it involved a lot of different adult care facilities. It was a pretty broad net. Those facilities had a lot more intensity, they were much more to a nursing home level of intensity than what I'm asking for in item number 10. So my position was, I think that the as amended thing, I mean, if I am, if the statute was amended to, say, elephant rooming houses, that's certainly not what you meant by saying as amended. And it was amended. And it was amended to make it so different that it didn't make sense anymore. So, as we got into this, and everybody got confused, and Carrie and I disagreed about what the definition was, we said, why don't we define it? Why don't we make it clear? That's all this is doing. And it's taking the compartments as they're now defined, not ACLF, because an ACLF did allow a lot more medical treatment than an ALF, but it branched off into a few different things. There's community residential homes that are, that are adult daycare facilities, there are different types of nursing homes, there are probably a dozen or more types of facilities that care for elderly people. And they have different intensity in terms of density, and in terms of the care that's given, that might be considered a more intensive type of care, that may or may not be compatible with either single-family or multifamily, or whatever it is you're looking at. So, at the end of the day, what you have in front of you here is trying to define them in your code, and the reason why there's several different places, Larry, is because there's different places in the code where it's got to get plopped in. So it's not a big thing, it's a pretty small thing, but all it's doing is fixing something that was broken, admittedly, on all sides of this. So, I would encourage you to, and what I want to say to you, because I'm going to jump back up in just a minute, is, you're not approving the ALF in downtown with this. You're just clearing your code up, and then I'm going to have to come back and plead my case to you that it's a good idea, and I'll be doing that in a few minutes, I suspect. Thanks.
Thank you, yes.
Well, I have a different take on, you know, assisted living care. My aunt is a perfect example. My uncle died, she was living at home by herself, she doesn't need any care, which at the assisted living, you don't get, receive any care. But she moved there because she felt safe in the environment there, instead of being in a middle family home. She still has her car, she drives once a week to the beauty shop, she enjoys the, they have a common kitchen, so she doesn't have to cook for herself, they prepare the meals. But this, if she was to move in to that one downtown, she would have all of her buddies out on Beach Street, walking up and down the streets, because they're, you know, they don't need nursing care. They need a safe place, they have socialized with the people that are there, they have their own little separate apartments, so they go in there like a condominium, except they have a community kitchen, and they're still, can, you know, care for themselves. What better group of, and then plus, this is Florida, we have an aging population, and there's a lot of couples that live there, that they've decided they don't want to keep the yard up, they don't want to keep their house up, and, but they're all busy, and they're out, and they're shopping, and they're on their streets, and I see them as an asset.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure that I think that's accurate.
It's, I don't know.
What we're talking about here is these, I think it's an 80-some thousand, thousand square foot building, we're talking about 100 units in it, and.
It's not that big, Bob, number one, but we're not talking about that, until the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
That's what I say, we probably should have taken that first, and then gone to this.
Well, then, I have some.
We've, we had a long discussion on this, as you could see with Bob's explanation here. The big piece that threw everybody off was the varied definitions of that assisted living facility. That's where the hangup was. And getting a clear definition made it easier to decide what was going on, once we got it.
Well, I think it all happened when we had those community homes, and like sometimes how we do, when you paint broad brush, you include a lot of things that you didn't necessarily, when, especially when, seems like when you're trying to single out one thing that you want to get rid of, it encompasses some things that you didn't intend to include.
Just a couple of things, just a very quick one on the definition that you're talking. Dealing with someone's toilet habits, their bathing and their continents, you're a certified nursing assistant, you have CNAs. It doesn't fall under nursing care, but it is a level of nursing care. When you read the state statutes on, you know, people not getting medications, actually they're self-administered, but certain medications, you can do topical ointments, you can do creams, you can do rubs, you can, you get the person's medication for them, you actually put it in their hand, there is a level of nursing care. To say there's no nursing care is to ignore the statute. It's also not just elderly ALFs, according to 429, 18 and older, 18 and older. It's adult living facility, 18 and older. So don't just think this is a bunch of little old gray-haired ladies. Just a couple of other things, that, you know, it said that this change, and I go right to what Larry said, currently, without any changes to it, you know, this is, this falls under our community residential home, this is allowed in so many areas of the city, and this would not change where it's allowed, it's just a matter of defining the different-sized homes. Except, having spoken with Ms. Hartman this afternoon at about 4:00, this would change a few things, again with the definition that we have. We just spent quite a bit of time doing a North Ridgewood overlay district. It would change that, because all that was prohibited there were community residential homes, which currently, the ALFs fell under, now they're being taken out, and they're going into zoning areas in the North Ridgewood overlay district, so you'd have to go back and put that in as a prohibition, if that's what everyone thought that they were doing at the time. And I think a large facility, which they have the zoning, the larger intense zonings that go up to 40 units per acre in the North Ridgewood, I think that we meant to keep that out of there. And interestingly enough, the city commission did just pass that overlay district last week unanimously, on the second reading, so we get to tell them that, no, we didn't quite mean it like that. Plus, because this is very open to, it seems like you can only put them where you have principal arterial streets, where our land development code doesn't really give a clear indication of what are our principal arterial streets. It tells you what our major thoroughfares are, it tells you what arterial streets are, and it tells you principal, but it doesn't name them. So for instance, this would affect Midtown, MLK, principal arterial street, major thoroughfare, what is it? But this is opening up, because Midtown doesn't have redevelopment zoning, RDD and RDB, which I think if this were going to be done, this should have been very much limited. Midtown has the R2s and the R1s and the R3s, so anywhere there's a principal arterial in Midtown, in their redevelopment, this is no longer prohibited. You have now opened all of that up. Without any changes, this and similar facilities are considered community residential homes through all of the Florida statutes. When you read the statutes, all of these homes, as they've been amended over the years, all still fall under Title 30, which is called the Social Welfare Section of Florida statutes. These are social welfare uses, which we have prohibited in the redevelopment areas, and we just spent two and a half years looking at social service uses outside of the redevelopment areas. And I'm sure I don't need to tell everybody that 38% of all of them fall within all our redevelopment areas, 24% of them in downtown. Daytona Beach, in just this downtown area, has 2,000-plus household or living units, for seniors, through ALFs, through different kinds of community and assisted housing, just within this area, some of them through the City Community Development Agency, you have Central Baptist Manor, you have St. Paul's, the San Casa, San, okay, right around the corner. So Daytona Beach has done more than its fair share in terms of dealing with social services, and I personally, this is where Rob and I disagree, but I agree with the city staff, this, or the city legal staff, this falls under community residential homes, which falls under a social service provision. I think Rob, starting this with, this is a staff request, not his, it's actually his project, which granted, it may have come up at the last minute, but when you start looking at a project, you don't see the whole picture until you begin to go through it. And fortunately, our legal staff saw the whole picture and said, wait, there's more here than meets the eye. And so this is a direct result of that request. The interesting thing that I find, besides this being a social service, and I said, you know, how many ALFs we have just in the area, there's a reason ALFs are becoming more popular in condos or not. HUD has available $1.3 billion in community block development grants, and, in general, and ALF grants in particular. And due to a ruling a couple of years ago, and this also, you can't get away from, I mean, you're sort of talking about, we want a different market, or a different, to reach a different market, but part of that ruling is that Section Eight, housing vouchers may be used for ALFs. You cannot not do that. When you have, if someone has that, you accept it. It's federal, you're taking federal funds, you meet federal guidelines. And Daytona Beach, Section Eight, we do a lot, a lot for it, and I am not being heartless here. I am just saying what we have said all along, we have become a regional center for social services, and this dressed up is the same thing. We just did a comp plan amendment in this city, saying if it's a social service, and I think this is the decision here, though Rob's going to say it's not, if this is, then there needs to be a determination of need. I mean, I don't know that the need is there. HUD is promoting grant availability, they have said, and they're doing it, because the uncertainty, this is right off their website, the uncertainty of the housing market combined with the aging baby boom generation is prompting developers to plan hundreds of new senior housing units across the country. This is the next wave of development. Before it was condos, there was money for condos, now there's money for this. I think looking at this as a different name, it's still something that I all along think is part of blight, when you have a concentration of these uses, whether it's in the redevelopment areas, or the city as a whole, and I think we have this concentration of uses. I would say, if this is, if there's an indication here for this to be passed, I think what needs to be tightened up, or clarified, or what the principal arterial streets are, because this will affect North Ridgewood, and it will affect Midtown. I think something to look at is the possibility of requiring a minimum parcel size. I'm not in favor of it at all, but I do think that if these things are, that if it goes through, that you should look at that. It might even need to, if the board desires to see this happen, you know, it might even need to go back to staff to look at some other ways of clarifying this, if there is a possibility, to make sure that we get what it is that we say we want. So, I just think that this is the wrong direction to go in after the last two and a half years. And I'm sure they want to develop something, and I'm sure something would be great, but whether it's on the front part of this property, or the back part of this property, it's going to affect what ends up on the front part of this property. And the front part of this property is key, a critical element to downtown redevelopment. And as for people walking up and down, there are no kitchen elements, I mean, this is the site, there are no kitchen elements, services are provided, and my sister and I, who are both young, healthy people, we just wouldn't walk three blocks downtown from one section, oh, that's three blocks, let's get in our car and go. People that are 30 years older than me are certainly not going to walk as far as this is, from where you actually hit downtown restaurants or anything else. So it's, I just think that it's not something that works here. And I actually think if we want to define it out of the land development code, that even this definition still should go back to staff for some further tightening. I think there's a problem with it, just as it is. If we need to separate it, great, but I still think that there's a problem just with this definition. So, that's where I'm coming from on it.
Yes, Janet.
May I say that, you know, I work in a medical profession, medical practice, and there is, to me, a clear and distinct difference between independent living, which I think is what really you're referring to, Mr. Hurt. Independent living is somewhat communal, you're in a, you're in a facility, or you're in housing, but you are not monitored by nursing care, you know, there is a, there might be a communal kitchen, but you have your own kitchen in your premises. Assisted living is just that, assisted. There's some monitoring going on here. Usually, they don't have a kitchenette. There's some, like she said, it's adult, it doesn't mean that you're in, you're elderly, it means that for whatever reason, you might be disabled, or need assisted care, you could be 25. So there is a big difference, and I just, I'm with you, I have some real concerns about, is this really what we want to have in our downtown? Bishop Glenn is a good example of the progression of care that usually happens. They have the independent living, they have the assisted living, they have the full nursing care, it's a progression that unfortunately usually happens as we, you know, age. So, this is not that. This is one thing that they want to do, and I don't think that this is the best use that we want in our downtown either.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just indulge me for a second, we keep talking about my projects, I feel compelled to get up and say what I was going to say when that came up, which I didn't do on this item, because I didn't think that was the right compartment for us to be in, but we're in it now. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk a little bit about it. And I'd like to tell you, Tracy and I might agree on something right here, and that is that, I think she's right. I think that, I think that there's a marketplace out there that is being recognized by some people who are investors, developers, in particular, this property owner that bought this property. Did they buy it for that purpose solely? No, but I think that they recognize that the positioning of the piece, and we haven't even, unfortunately, gone through the presentation yet, with Jason giving you the geography and the aerials and stuff, which I think you need to do, but when you look at the positioning of this particular piece that this developer would like to put an ALF on, it's a good transition between, and Tracy, I can't imagine somebody who's got the kind of money that they have invested in this 10 acres, taking two acres of it and doing something that pollutes the other eight, and ruins their investment. So I hear what you're saying, if it was really something bad, it really was a social services use, which, there's a place for those things, and has Daytona Beach done more than their share? Yeah, I'm with you on that parade. But at the end of the day, these people don't want to do a social service on their property. I mean, it's not a bad thing, but in this place, it may not be the right thing. What they want to do is an upscale assisted living. Yes, Janet, there's going to be some assistance, as it's defined here. I'm not trying to hide any of those cards. There's not going to be medical treatment, there's not going to be psychological treatment. So you're not doing the drug rehab, alcohol rehab, if there's somebody that's younger than us, 18, 20, whatever, I don't know that there's a harm in that. In fact, I think we want those people downtown, and if they've got some sort of a physical disability that requires them to have some minor assistance in using the restroom, or preparing meals, I just, I don't see the problem with that. And I don't think that was the intent of whatever was put in the code, that we've differed on the nomenclature about. And frankly, I'd really like to have this item that clarifies those things finished, and if there's some question about arterial roads, or parcel size, or something, you know, I don't think this is even getting into the development part of it, it's just simply the definitional part, and the compartments in the zoning code it goes in. If we can get past this, I can talk to you about the project, and I know Jason's going to, and you can decide whether it's a good project or a bad project, that's going to be within your discretion, as will any of these projects as they come forward. But finding a place for people that are aging in Daytona Beach, is that a bad thing? Is it anything like finding a place for the blood banks and the homeless people to be fed? No, it's not. I mean, it's one of the things that we deal with as human beings, but it's not one of the ones that's going to chase people out of downtown. In fact, like Jeff said, it's probably going to have a lot of elderly people walking around, eating at our restaurants, and shopping at the lampshade shop, and, you know, and for anybody to think that somebody who came in and bought this 10 acres, and paid a lot of money for it, wants to put something there, it's going to scare people away, I mean, just use your intuition to get to the conclusion on that one. So, enough said, I don't want, I sort of hesitate to go too far over the line of talking about the particular project that's next on the agenda. If you want to hold off on this, and talk about that, and come back. If you want to hold off on this, and talk about that, and come back, I'd have to do that.
I think you need to hold off on that, and we need to clarify this, I think, at this point. Yeah. So, you're saying you think it needs to go back, then, for...
No, no, no. I think we need to hear from the board, and this is clearly a policy. And I would always encourage you not to consider a project, or a piece of property, when you do zoning regulations. You should look at this as a code, it can apply to more than one property, more than one use, and decide the policy, and we can work out the details once we hear the policy.
I understand it. I still feel that should have come first, before this, and would have better clarification.
Though, looking at this zoning wide, and breaking this out, I mean, the first thing under Chapter 429, assisted care communities, which they all fall, it used to be adult congregate care, well, now, we've changed the names, but, you know, it's still a zebra. To the maximum extent possible, appropriate community-based programs, ALFs, et cetera, must be available to state-supported residents to augment the services provided in assisted living facilities. It's, you can't make this more restrictive than the state law. You can't keep out what the state law lets come in, you know. And if it's an ALF, and Janet is so right, independent living is a totally different thing. Assisted living facility falls under state law. No matter what we do here, once we define it, and it's in, there are going to be state laws that that's part, whether it's downtown, or whether it's Midtown, or whether it's North Ridgewood, or whether it is beachside, there are state laws that over, are the umbrella over ALFs. And that's part of what has to be taken into account here, the way that we break this out, you know. And I just think we're opening a huge mess to try and do this, and this does have nothing to do with the project. To try and do this citywide, which is just going to affect, without being aware of many more of these ramifications, I, you know, you've got to look at the law.
Well, I tend to agree. I think it needs to be sent back to staff for rework and clarification. I'm not opposed to trying to break out on what's being done, but I think we're really getting into a mess here. And so, that would be my recommendation.
I have a question for Rob. Has your client considered the verbiage independent living in opposition to what we have here?
Yeah, I don't think my client has gotten anywhere near into the level of detail that we have delved into in these last two hearings. I'm going to invite him to come to the next hearing with me. And what I'm going to say to you is, if you guys aren't comfortable with this legislative piece you have in front of you, because that's what it is, I agree. And Tracy's right, if it's got other ripple effects in other parts of the city, deal with them. I think, my opinion is, these are good uses, you should put them in all the parts of the city. I mean, this is not the put it out on Indian Lakes Road kind of use, it's not, it's something we want. If people are going to spend, for instance, in this case, 15, 20 million dollars, building a nice facility to cater to Jeff's aunt, and people who might be able to, you know, to get into that kind of facility, God bless them. I mean, let them bring our tax increment up by 15 or 20 million, I love it. But if there's some...
So, you were telling me this is going to be a high-paying client file?
This, my, but again, this is a legislative piece that deals with everything, and I'm agreeing with Tracy that you ought to make sure you're comfortable with it. If you're not going to act on this tonight, it doesn't allow the definitions to be clear enough that I think we're able to present the ALF to you tonight. So, it's either, you know, if you continue one, I think you need to continue both. Now, the third piece, the frontage piece, the straight zoning, you know, that doesn't, that's not affected by this at all, and I'm happy to bring that forward, but I'd like to see you bring all three of them forward. I think it's the right thing to do. If you want to delay this tonight on the agenda, and let us talk through the ALF project, and whether you get comfortable with this project, and then you know more about what sort of things you need to worry about with this, if any, we could do that, too. So, I mean, those are kind of your options. Hold this until, like you did with the other item, you move things around, move it around, let's talk about the other one fully, and let Jason do his presentation, get an impression of what we're talking about in downtown, and then decide whether there are other issues here. You might be able to do, if it's an issue of what's allowed on Ridgewood, Tracy, maybe you just got to say something about that. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to spend a whole nother month on something that turns out to be a small tweaking, if that's what it is. And it might be. So, anyway, I'm throwing it out, the one thing I want to make sure you knew was, from my, from where I sit, when the next item comes up, if you continue this, I'm going to ask you to continue that, too.
We understand that.
And it might be more than a small tweaking, if this goes back to staff, and staff concludes, which is certainly what I think they were saying in their staff report to the redevelopment board, but if staff concludes that this is a social service, then you've got to meet in a social, you're going to have to meet the comp plan amendment that was recently passed, which I don't see, if you're doing an ALF, that you'll ever meet the comp plan, which was, you know, that amendment was done to encourage the equalization of the overpopulation of these kinds of services and facilities in the city of Daytona Beach. So, I think that's a pretty big thing...
That is a big thing.
...to have to get answered with staff.
Well, I think what staff's told you tonight, you've got a pretty complete and thorough staff report on this agenda item, and what it tells you is, the existing code is flawed, because it makes reference to an antiquated piece of...
No, it doesn't tell me that at all, it doesn't say it's...
Well, then you can ask your city attorney, you said right there.
And we're saying this is flawed, too, the way you presented it.
Well, no, no, but let's, but before we get to what's flawed about this layer, I think you need to flesh out what Tracy's saying, which is, that there needs to be some consideration of whether the statutory reference creates a social service definition on this. I don't think that the city attorney's weighed in on that one way or the other. I think they've weighed in on what the land development code said, and how it relates to the statutes, and I promise you, they will agree with me, that it's relating to a statute that has been changed, and no longer exists in its form that it was in back then. So, they're trying to correct the code now, to make a reference to the statute as it exists now. Now, it's just a clarification. Now, the question about which arterial roads these particular uses are allowed on, that's a different thing.
They're trying to correct the code to allow you to do an RP...
That's not true. That's absolutely not true. That's absolutely not true.
If you were doing an ALF, well, I don't want to get into it.
If my project weren't here, we may not have been here talking about this, because they might not have seen it and recognized it, but it was recognized, and, I mean, I'll let you speak up if you want, Carrie, because I don't think that you'll disagree with me that the code, as it reads now, references a statute that's not the way it was when it was first adopted.
And that's true, but as to whether the intent argument is where, I don't think we're necessarily on the same page.
Whole different deal. That's a legislative interpretation thing.
Right, right. And that's, but that's a key element here.
Well, I mean, I don't know that it's a key element in what you've got in front of here. I mean, I think that you've got a piece of legislation here that clarifies your code, and brings it in line with the Florida statutes. I mean...
Well, the other piece about that, though, Rob, that that does, is where it's allowed, because this...
That's true. That's the other piece. So, if there's an issue about Ridgewood, yeah, you've got to deal with that. So, that's why I was conceding to you, that if there are those issues, and the board believes that we need to address where on Ridgewood, or whether Midtown should have an ALF, which certainly, I think, you know, a $15 million ALF that, you know, has, you know, good residents that are paying their rent, what's wrong with it? It's a multifamily situation where somebody needs a little help. But in any event, that's going to the merits of the ALF, and if you think that that's something that you're not comfortable dealing with in this piece of legislation, and you continue it, I just wanted you to know that the project, I'm going to continue that, too, which is your decision.
Or do we have a choice? We can vote it up, we can vote it down, or we can vote to send it back to the planning staff, and I'm open to a motion.
Well, we'll try a motion first, and see where it goes. Motion to approve Land Development Code text amendment, wait, how would this be? If we do a motion, and there's an interest in sending it back?
How do we do that?
Well, I mean, it's, whoever makes the first motion, we could, if you want to vote it up or down, you can do that. If then, a second amendment wants to be made, to, you know, motion to direct staff to go back and come up with something else, but I'm not real sure which direction. You would need to give staff some direction.
Okay. Well, then, let's just vote on it.
To continue it, or what?
No, I'll just do a motion, we'll see what happens. Land Development Code, because someone can always reconsider if they don't like what happens. Land Development, motion to approve Land Development Code text amendment, assisted living facilities, DEV 2012-059. Motion to approve, yeah, it's always in, always in the positive, right?
We have a motion and a second. I'd like a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. Remar?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Washington, yes. Mr. Hoitsma?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Ms. Sade?
No.
If somebody on the prevailing side wants to give us some further direction of what would be, except that we can certainly work on that.
Or it could stand as failing.
Absolutely.
And our land development code stands as dead.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware. I'm not so opposed, myself, as far as trying for clarification, but not under these circumstances. So, I certainly...
Would it make it more supportive if it was limited to just the downtown redevelopment area, which I'd imagine Rob probably could care less if he support that, that it was recommended through the downtown redevelopment board, and we could take the references to any allowance of this in other places? That would take care of some of the other issues that were raised. I'm just not sure the policy of the board...
You'd have to do it citywide, though, wouldn't you? I can't imagine.
No, you could make this a permitted use only in the downtown redevelopment area.
I do think the first thing that would have to be answered before you do anything is, what is this? Is it a social service? I, I mean, unless you do that, actually trying to define it further with the overabundance of social services and providers that we have in the city, it will never, whether it's this or anything, it will never meet the comp plan for quite some time.
Yeah, I don't, I'm assuming the intent is, it's not a social service use, and if it meets that, I think definitely, that's a policy.
If it is, it won't meet it. If it's not, but I do think there needs to be actually quite a bit of legal looking at that, to decide what this is, exactly. And what our code, what was the intent of our code, and what should be the intent of our code.
The one thing to keep in mind, assisted living, as the code reads right now, citywide assisted living facilities are, because community residential homes are only prohibited in redevelopment areas. So, if we do the reverse, where now you're only allowed, you're taking out assisted living homes, and then you're only allowing them in the downtown area, I think that's going to have very large, I mean, we'd have to take it back to the downtown board, and make you understand that's what's going to happen.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, I think the first thing that has to be answered is, what is it? Does this fall under that social service umbrella? Because even if it's, even if it's in the code right now, in terms of certain zoning categories, whether it's downtown or anywhere, if it is that legally, then the first thing any new one's going to have to deal with in the city is the comp plan amendment that was just done.
Just passed.
I agree with that.
Just passed, so I think that's sort of...
Tracy, let me suggest something to you. I sense that there are six of you that are not comfortable with this piece of legislation the way it reads. So, but, and I also think that, based on my watching what happened here tonight, maybe some of them were influenced by your point about social services versus not. I, you know, I don't know, I think we need to talk about that. I mean, because, because I think that, I disagree with you, and so you know that, and that's obvious. I think that the city staff needs to, needs to do some work on that, and we need to decide whether they brought you something that was illegal already. So, I would, I would ask of the six of you, one of the six of you, or maybe two, if you need a second, to reconsider the direction to one of asking staff to go back and consider this, because as Larry said, your city attorney and I agree that the code's not correct now. So, there's two components to this. There's one that's clarifying the code, and there's another that's saying where things go. Agreed. Your question about, when you clarify the code, are you opening up something that's prohibited as a social service, that hasn't been addressed here. And if you want it addressed, that's one thing you can ask them to do. The other thing is to consider where the things are going. But what I said to you about the item that I've got next on the agenda, stands the way it was. I want to continue that till that's resolved, because I don't want to have a debate with you tonight, Tracy, without knowing where these two right here stand, in redevelopment apartment, on that question, because I think it's a very important question you've raised. I know, I know what I think the answer is, but I don't know that they're ready to tell you the answer to that.
And I'm actually not, not sure that legal, and again, it's really not about debating with you, but listening, having listened to the video on the Main Street Redevelopment Board, I didn't hear legal say they agreed, I heard legal say to you, well, you can ask.
That was on a different subject.
Yeah, that was, there was a change in interpretation down the road after that.
But to me, it's, again, the same, you're dealing with interpretation, so it always, when it's interpretation, it comes to attorneys. I, I don't... No, I don't want to continue it.
Okay, so, if the motion stands as failed, that the code is unclear, then the next item...
You, it's unclear.
Yep, well, I don't know. I don't know that anybody, I don't know that the staff brought you this to clear up something that was already clear, in terms of the definitional aspects of it, Tracy, which I thought we agreed...
No, I think they were very clear in the redevelopment, they were very, I'm looking right at it, Rob, you know, what was, what they include, what staff included in the report to the downtown development board, where is it? I've got it right here.
It was an interpretation of what the code meant, in light of the change in the statutes. It never said that the code would be clear if it referred to the modern statutes instead of the old ones, where we had to disagree about an interpretation.
During the review, staff had noted concerns about the proposed use in the downtown redevelopment area. Assisted living facilities fall under the definition of community residential homes in our LDC. It, the LDC defines them, they say how it defines them, which, community residential home, any residential facility which meets the definition of community residential home in Florida statute 419, which of course, we've gone through, it's been amended, or adult congregate living facility, in Florida statute 400, all of those fall under Title 30. The Florida statute 400 was amended and became 429 assisted care. So, whatever you call it, right now, in our land development code, it is still a community residential home, which is a prohibited use. And in our land development code, they took into account that it's this, it's this, or it's whatever else they call it in these statutes. So, they're calling it something else 20 years down the road. It's still whatever else they call it.
It's not only called something else, it's defined totally differently. And Tracy, let me just, let me just, we're going to have, we have to leave this issue, I agree, but I can tell you, I've been practicing land use law for 25 years, I disagree with what you just said. I disagree with your interpretation. I took a whole year of legislative interpretation in law school, 25, 27 years ago. I disagree with you. So, but that's beside the point. In order to have some clarification on this next agenda item, I want to ask for continuance on that, based on your vote that you just had, in order for me to go prove to you, and to others, that what's being requested by virtue of being in either 400, 419, 429, or wherever it happens to be, is not a social service that's prohibited by the comp plan, because I need to do that. And that's something you just presented for the first time tonight to both of us, all of us, and it needs to be addressed. So, on that basis, I'm going to request, you've already done with that other item, if nobody's made a motion to reconsider, I want to request a continuance on item number 10.
Fine. Need to have a motion on that. On item number 10, a continuance been asked for.
Motion to continue rezoning residential planned unit development, Renaissance Place, DEV 2011-010.
Second.
Oh, to, when do you want it continued?
Yeah.
Next month?
Next month, to the...
Be the 26th?
August.
Why don't you give me 60 days?
September. Aren't we, aren't we, what are we, June?
We're in June.
August. So, it would be August.
August 4th.
August 2012, whatever day it is.
The 4th Thursday.
What is it, Ms. Washington?
I said 4th Thursday.
Oh, okay.
20, no, I'm sorry, wrong one.
Okay.
23rd.
Okay, August 23rd. We needed a date, sir. Okay, August 23rd. We needed a date certain.
Okay.
Okay, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right. Item number 11.
I believe we've had, hopefully with all this discussion, you're aware of what is occurring...
Excuse me just a second. We didn't vote.
We did a motion and a second, but you didn't carry it out.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? I thought I did.
I guess we all whispered.
Now Kathy?
I didn't hear it.
Okay. I'd like to on this next one, if we can, take item number eight ahead of item number seven. Because item number seven ties in with the next three rather than jumping back and forth if we could. So Kathy, if you would read us item number eight.
Item number eight? Item number eight, Land Development Code Text Amendment, permitting dogs in designated outdoor public food service establishments. DEV 2012-045.
We hear from staff, Mr. Jeffries?
Oops, excuse me, trying to find the clicker. Good evening, Jason Jeffries with the redevelopment office. This is a request for, to allow dogs in outdoor designated areas for eating to be in those dining areas. The health codes of the state of Florida do not allow any type of animals in any type of eating area, even if it's in the outdoor designated area. So for instance, in our downtown redevelopment area where we have the sidewalk cafes, out on the sidewalk, you technically cannot have the dogs in those dining areas. We've had a request for one of our new businesses in the downtown area. This is where it started, after they got a warning from the health department for having a dog in the dining area, that if they could have dog dining in the area. The state code does allow, if the city, the local jurisdiction such as the city adopts this ordinance, they can have, as long as they file for a permit and fill out the application and follow the rule, the regulations set forth in the draft that's before you, they can have the dogs in those restaurant outdoor dining areas. In preparing the document, we didn't, instead of just making an apply to, even though the request is coming out of the downtown area, we felt that this, if this is approved, would be a reasonable application citywide. So that's why you see this being put into Article 17 with the conditional uses. With that, staff does recommend, supports the downtown redevelopment board's recommendation of approval of this item.
We have any questions of staff?
The state had that rule there in the first place that we have to go against. What is their thinking on this? It's been around a long time, has it not?
Well, I think really at first, it was just, you didn't allow dogs in any eating area. This is a health, health reason. Beyond that, instead of just, you know, I don't understand why the state didn't just carve out an exception for outdoor eating areas, why we have to go through this whole hoopla that the, the local jurisdiction has to approve the ordinance, but that's how they wrote their state ordinance. So essentially, if it's up to the local jurisdictions to, to adopt this ordinance as an exception of that, just in the outdoor dining areas. I want to be clear, this is not in the inside areas, these are in the outdoor dining areas. And this is quite common in urban locations to allow dogs, you know, very, it's very common to find in urban areas to have dogs in these outdoor seating areas such as on Beach Street.
As far as I'm concerned, I like dogs, but I certainly don't want to eat with dogs, even if it's outside and the wind blows, hair comes flying around. So as far as I'm concerned, I will not support this.
I do have a couple of questions. We're not charging a fee for this permit. I don't see one noted anywhere in here.
I believe there will be a fee, that's all, that's done administrative.
Okay.
That's adopted by resolution.
So won't that end up in Article 20? Doesn't that have to be amended or something?
No.
Fees were taken out of Article 20 and done by separate resolution.
That's right. That's, okay, that's, I totally forgot about that, I looked for that. And the enforcement of this falls under this Article 1, Section 8. Is that, I didn't look it up, I should have, is that our code? Code enforcement?
It's our general enforcement provisions, it gives us a wide variety.
So code officers would be enforcing this?
Correct.
Okay. Call for a complaint. Okay.
But I believe also the health, the state health...
Well, you have to report it to them.
Right.
Right.
Well, and I, you know, I think we're referring in our code to our code enforcement provisions, but also the, the state health code, or whoever enforces the state health code in terms of restaurants.
Right.
They also would be looking, because it was actually a restaurant enforcement that came down and saw the dogs in the dining area. At this one particular restaurant.
Well, I, I, I see them all the time downtown at one particular restaurant. And I actually see them at the table on people's laps, which is not where I want to see dogs. But myself, you know, I go over to Winter Park. It's great having everyone's dogs out there. I mean, it just adds so much to the area. You can choose not to eat outside with the dogs. Like you can choose not to sit outside with the smokers, which is where you generally have your smoking outside. The, being a dog owner, you know, it's something, our dog's not on our kitchen counters, but he's certainly laying in the middle of the kitchen when we're cooking. So if you come eat at my house, you have just as much possibility of having a dog here in your food as you do it, you know, downtown. So the, I mean, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I just think it's a great idea. And I'm, I'm actually glad that it's going into Article 17. So it could be citywide rather than just the redevelopment, you know.
Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, like if this passes and someone has a restaurant that has an outdoor area and they don't want to have dogs in their outdoor area?
If the restaurant does not want to have it?
They don't have to.
They don't have to apply for this. This, they have to go through a process. Right.
So they would have to have their own permit. So if they didn't want to do it?
Right.
They wouldn't be...
It's up to the restaurant.
If it was a kind of...
Right. Yeah.
I have a comment.
Yes.
That alone makes me feel a lot better because I'm a little bit on the fence myself. I'm a dog lover, I have a wonderful schnauzer, who's pretty well behaved in my dining room. But I may not want to take her to a restaurant because, you know, some dogs are just a little more better trained than others. So having a choice to me is, is a good option. The restaurant has a choice. If they do choose to have the permit and allow dogs, the diner has a choice to go inside. You know, this is a European trend. It's, it's very popular over there. It's, it's not frowned upon at all. I totally understand what you're saying, Ms. Remar, you know, if your dog is...
Not that my house is dirty, but...
No, oh, believe me, I do. But it's nice to be able to have the option and the choice. I think most people that would bring their animal to a dining, you know, facility is, they're pretty responsible owners. You know, it's nice if the restaurant's going to have a choice. So I, I support that on that alone, that they have a choice to either offer it or, or decline it. So, thank you.
And I would like to say too, like in Palm Beach on Worth Avenue, they have six dog bowls up and down Worth Avenue, which is the most expensive street in the United States.
Now that I could see, away from that area.
No, they're outside to the patio restaurants, they're on down the street, they're everywhere because everybody has their dog with them on them.
But it also excludes someone that wants to eat outside. If dogs are there, then you're not going to eat outside. So there is an exclusion to people. I think we've discussed it. No.
No, there weren't any.
We're ready.
Any question regarding the LDC tax amendment? It's all for 2012-045, dogs in outdoor dining areas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
No.
Two.
So are you voting, you're voting no outside?
Yes. Now we're ready for number seven.
Item number 13, Land Development Code Text Amendment. Excuse me, Code Enforcement Citation Process, DEV 2012-070.
May we hear from code enforcement?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hector Garcia. I am the Community Compliance Standards Manager for the City of Daytona Beach. What you're going to see before you is a, we are asking for an amendment to Article 2, Section 1.1 of the Land Development Code, by adding a definition of the itinerant or transient violation to read as follows. Itinerant or transient violation for the purposes of code enforcement authorized under Florida State Statute 162.23 means an infraction of the Land Development Code which is brief or non-permanent in nature and which is capable of being remedied or repeated on the same day. For example, parking a vehicle in a prohibited location or on private property, or the display of prohibited banners which would be itinerant or transient violations. Reason why we're asking for that is, we are in the process of starting a citation process. The citation process vision, code enforcement's proactive vision for the city, includes clean aesthetically appealing buildings and green spaces, balancing the feelings of safety and crime prevention, and preserve and revitalize the unique attributes of neighborhoods, our archaeological and historical landmarks through the use of sound codes, through the use of sound codes and enforcement methods that work to encourage economic development and to, and improve the standards of appearance and aesthetics of the entire city. The citation process is a civil process authorized under Florida State Statute Channel, Chapter 162, Part 2, to enforce the Land Development Code violations. In addition, the code board and special magistrate procedures, we are asking to increase the fine amounts from a hun, to $100, which would be the initial citation. And if it's a repeated violation, it would be a $250 repeat violation. That would offset the administrative and processing costs. The intent is a higher compliance rate and fewer repeated violations. Recommendation is a provision that would generally prohibit the issuance of development orders for real property that is the subject of uncorrected violations of the Land Development Code, or where the owner or occupant has unpaid code enforcement fines or civil penalties outstanding. The citation process, State Statute requires that the city create a definition for the itinerant or transient violations, which I've read to you at the beginning. And the purpose of the ordinance would address all of these concerns. You know, Police Chief Mike Chitwood recommends approval of this proposed ordinance. So if you have any questions in regards to that, what we are actually trying to do is, again, we're, we're, at the present time, the citation fines are $50. We're raising them up to 100. And if it's a repeat violation, then it would be a $250 fine. And to, in order to do that, we need to also be more specific with the definition of itinerant and transit, transient violations.
Are there any questions?
Couple, does this, does this, is there some kind of due process? So someone who's parking on their lawn or is overgrown or something? Is this, you see it and you get a citation for $100?
No.
Or, okay.
No.
How does it work actually?
As you've been trained as, as one of my volunteers, the code enforcement process is...
I can't do it anymore.
Right. But the code enforcement process is, if I go to Ms. Tracy Remar's property and I see a violation, I speak to her, I educate her, I issue her a warning. At that time, we give her a time to comply. If he or she does not comply and we go back, then we would issue the citation. Because now we've given you time to do it. Now, here's the flip side of it also. You correct it, and this is at nine o'clock in the morning, and at two o'clock in the afternoon, you park your vehicle, you have your trash cans out or so forth and so on, and you've done it again. Now we're going to issue you a citation.
But that would just be the first one, not the repeat one?
Correct. Now tomorrow, I go back and you do it again, it's a repeat violation. That's correct.
Wow, that's pretty heavy.
And this, this is in lieu of going to either the special magistrate or the code enforcement board?
This is basically for violations, like it says in, in the definition, that are going to be repeated time and time again. However, if it's something that we can take...
The ones that take up all the time.
Exactly. It's not going to substitute the code enforcement process of issuing a notice of violation, bringing them before the special magistrate or the code enforcement board.
And Ms. Remar?
This is just an added tool to help us for these repeat violators. We have a business that puts out an A-frame sign. We tell them they can't have it out there, which is prohibited. They take it in, an hour and a half later, they put it back out.
This wouldn't include Ms. Remar's house where a dog would be in the kitchen around food, would it?
No, 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 they wouldn't do that.
Couldn't resist that, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Actually, my dog is dead.
Sorry to hear that.
It's a cat, it's a cat instead, but it's still furry.
Did I say the dog's still in the kitchen?
What is she...
Tracy, it's only one cat, correct?
I only have one.
Okay.
I only have one.
Just a question about the overgrown lot situation? That's still going to go through the regular code?
Yes, absolutely. These are, like I said and I explained, this is going to be an added tool for us. It's predominantly going to be for when we're dealing with businesses that are basically stubborn, you know, they snub their nose at us. We turn around, we tell them, you can't have this banner up. Okay, they take it down. Two days later, they put it back up again. You know, we've explained to this. It's, it's not going to be where I'm just going to walk up to a property owner or a business owner and say to them, look, remove it or you're going to get the citation. My officers have been instructed, and, and I'm a firm believer in, I go to somebody, I talk to them, I educate them, I explain to them, I give them the opportunity to come into compliance. They come into compliance, fine. But two days later, they're going to snub their nose at us. Guess what? Here's a $100 ticket. Two days later, they do it again, it's $250.
Do you take a picture with the date and time?
Absolutely.
So, no question?
Everything is recorded in the computer system.
What if you find me and I say I'm not going to pay, what do you do?
Well, then you'll be explaining it to a judge because this is a civil process. So we'll be taking it to county court. If you choose not to pay it, then the court will then put you through collections.
And all of that falls under State Statute?
That's correct.
This is the, okay.
All right, any other questions?
Before I forget, staff recommends that this be approved so that we can take it to the commission.
And you also mentioned Mr. Chitwood too.
And the chief does also approve it also, so.
Motion to approve Land Development Code Text Amendment, Code Enforcement Citation Process, DEV 2012-070.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Ready for other business? Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment, Ms. Washington?
I'll be very, very brief. We went over our agenda tonight minus the, the code reports. We actually went over our agenda, and as you can see, it was a long meeting.
Yeah. Good. All right. Ms. Benjamin, by the way, her mother passed away a couple of days ago. That's why she's not here. I have a card that I would like for all of us to sign, and flowers are also being sent. So after, after the meeting, I'd like for you all, before you leave, to sign this. Ms. Remar, Main Street, South Atlantic.
We had actually one item, the conceptual site plan for 801 South Atlantic, the proposed Canadian project south of Sun Splash Park on the several acres. I was going to pass, pass this around, y'all might like to take a look at it. Just a couple of things, the, the board gave some input as to some things to keep in mind if this actually happens. But was very, very, very positive to it. It's a, the thing to keep in mind though, is we were told, this is only one of three sites being considered. The other two, Nevada and Arizona... The other two, Nevada and Arizona. This happens to be the only state where they actually own the land, where they're considering the site. There is no infrastructure that will support this project. That's a huge part of it. And so there's a lot that has to happen over all of our heads, dealing with tax abatements, TIP, how the, the developers said, their representatives said, that they realize the only way this can happen is they're gonna have to front the money for the infrastructure. And so it's figuring out how that works out. So there, there's a lot that still has to happen, but this looks, this would happen in two phases. It's a wonderful design. It's an A-frame, or an letter A design, rather than a rectangular square building. It really makes a lot of use of views, things like that. So it, the concept plan, you know, got quite a thumbs up from the board. And we had some redevelopment project updates on what was at, Joe's Crab Shack had the highest opening sales day of any property they've ever opened anywhere in the United States, here at the Daytona Pier. So, I mean, that, that was just great. And then some other project things that are, that are ongoing. So that was our meeting.
Very good. Uh, we're ready for public comments. We have one speaker, Mr. Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. On your RDB 5 maps, it showed two public properties, public institution. It included the Greek church and the cemetery. It excluded the Peabody. I'm really sensitive about the Peabody. Is that an issuance from the staff, that the, we are now not including the Peabody as part of it? Plus, there were five other churches left off? So I'm, you know, when, when the staff does this, you should be told, because it's, it's in gray. The cemetery's in gray, the Greek church is in gray. And the other property that should be in gray, the pier, the parks, the Ocean Center, those are all public institutions, they were not. So I just wanted to bring that up. Secondly, the CRAs. It was mentioned, if you've been reading those articles, about the Main Street CRA, about the, the problem of putting a suburban overlay on a redevelopment area. I'm sure that it's been mentioned in the past, and the, the Main Street has talked about it. Could we, I don't know how long before the Land Development Code comes into effect? Could we discuss it now? Because you really can't develop the CRA area, especially Main Street, by putting the suburban design on top of it, the distance between properties, et cetera. I had a friend who was willing to put half a million dollars on a property on the river to increase it. And then the Land Development Code said, well, if you put that money into it, it's more than the value of the property. Then you have to come into current code. The lot size is too small. You have to tear down the house to rebuild it. And you can't rebuild it to the square footage, because you have to do this. So he ended up tearing down the house and then selling the property. Otherwise, we'd had a $750,000 house on the river, which we really, really could have used. And lastly, on the ALF, San Pablo Lautit? I don't know the name of that, the Episcopal one.
It's actually now Westminster.
Westminster?
Yeah.
And then the Baptist. Are they considered ALFs? I mean, if they are, if they are social service institutions, then how does it differ from this particular property? The way that we're describing it, the property was gonna be upscale, but we have an ALF on the beachside that is definitely not upscale. And then when Tracy came up with the Section 8 housing, I'm like, oh, shoot. We don't need that. We need people with disposable income. And that's the problem I have with it. You don't help an area if you keep lowering the property values. If, in a CRA, the whole idea is to lift them up. And the only way to lift them up is to have people with disposable income. Otherwise, our restaurants, our stores are not gonna function. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, staff comments?
Apologize for missing your meeting last month. My daughter graduated from high school, so now I have no more in high school. And I understand it was a very spirited meeting. I'm sorry I missed.
When the cat's away.
Board member comments?
Happy Fourth.
I'm sorry?
Happy Fourth.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment. I hope everyone has gotten their forms back into Ann McFall. I think that's due July the 1st, which is a couple of days away or so, for three. So if you don't have it in, you need to get it in post haste. As I said, I'd like for y'all to stick around to sign the card for Ms. Benjamin.
Comment. In sitting through the discussion regarding this ALF, it was made, well, it was, the information was given to us that this was going to be an upscale. These individuals would be more or less like your aunt, as you explained. That was the explanation that we were given on the redevelopment board.
Were any dollars values mentioned? That's what I'm gonna be interested in, when it comes up. I want to hear some dollar values. Just exactly because of.
They did, but they did not, I don't remember. They did mention dollar amounts specifically, but it would not have been a social services entity, from the explanation we were given.
It's my understanding that, that dollars were not, that subject was avoided. So I don't know. I wasn't there.
Yeah, the, I sat through some of those. And clearly, the redevelopment board was struggling with how to ensure the high quality. And I think the representation was made, well, that'll be handled through the PD in the development agreement. We'll get into that later. It wasn't on the agenda for them to discuss the PD agreement, which would be before you, at least in terms of the details of that, before that project moves forward.
But can I make a comment? An ALF is going to be subject to a whole bunch of federal rules about nondiscrimination. So it seems to me it's highly unlikely, or they, they would like to have an expensive, high-class clientele with lots of big money. There is no way you can do that using federal, if the federal government is involved, because there's gonna be discrimination statutes you have to fight.
Well, from, as I said, from the explanation I was given.
And he had to not fight.
It was that it was going to be an upscale facility. And that was why I asked tonight, if the client had a problem with going from assisted living.
Living to independent.
To independent living.
Yeah. Independence, a whole different ball of wax.
Right. And, and that, the way it was given to us was that it was going to be independent.
Yeah.
So, I think we need clarity.
Set it? Meeting adjourned?